... And to the couple of officials saying one nation under God and the principle of preserving the justice of our country.
Thank you.
My mind's gonna do it?
I don't know. Okay. So everyone had a chance to review the minutes? Any additions or corrections?
Yeah, I do. I'm sorry.
Motion to approve?
Make a motion.
Kathy made a motion to approve. Is there a second? All in favor? Opposed? Questions on claims and payroll? Any questions, Regina? Shirley made a motion to pass the payroll and claims? Okay, and claims. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Brooke seconds. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Any updates on the blight elimination project, Brooke?
No. Last meeting, Aaron, two meetings ago, Aaron was talking about the contract that he didn't come to the last meeting. So there was no update on the Sixth Street lot. But the last email that I got about the sidewalk is we're waiting for the construction company to come back and tear it up, redo it. But currently, there's been no work done.
Public Safety Board Ordinance Number 2022-15. Grant, do you want to kick us off?
Great to talk after this week. The, basically going back through the old town record, it wasn't entirely there, the status of the safety board that oversees issues with the police department. And I just wanted to make sure we had that buttoned down and reconstitute that effectively. And for Brookville in the past, it's always been the town council. So let's just reconstitute it as the town council. It's the members of the town council and it runs coterminous with the terms on town council. So that way, if people were rolling off on a staggered term, which is what's required, if you're already on town council, you have to align to be on the safety board. So exclude that. And then if and when the safety board meets, you would adopt, you can go through and adopt procedural rules and all of that as the safety board. But this is just basically housekeeping to make sure this is buttoned down and ordered.
So are we making a motion to approve? Do we need to make a motion to suspend both readings?
Yes. So you're adopting all of it at once right now? Yes.
Is there a motion to suspend both readings to adopt in its entirety at one meeting?
Yeah, I'll make a motion.
Chuck made a motion. Is there a second? Shirley seconds. All in favor? Opposed? It's unanimous, so we can suspend the second reading. Now I need a motion to approve ordinance number 2022-15, an ordinance to the safety board of the town of Brookville, Indiana.
Sorry, I'll make a motion to approve the ordinance.
Brooke made a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Kathy seconds. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Grant did.
Yeah, basically did summarize. Basically, just recreating the safety board. It's five sentences, so pretty much that was the summary.
Old Business Hidden Valley Sewer Main bid submitted by Breckley Inc., Grant. We took this under advisement.
Yes, I took it under advisement. It met the requirements and mine intending Tim was ready to proceed because they wanted to get the work done.
Tim is ready to proceed?
Yes, you said he was fine with that, whatever Greg said.
Okay. So the con, or the bid for the work was $97,200, and this is to repair the sewer main in Hidden Valley? Right, Gina?
Correct.
Is there a motion regarding the bid?
I would like to ask council for approval as well. In consideration of the amount of the bid, we have a CD for suing the works coming due the end of November, $50,000 CD. I would prefer to cash that in as well to help with the cost and not bring our operating down so low.
I think that makes sense. So we'll do this in two parts if the board chooses. First, regarding the bid for the sewer repair. Is there a motion regarding Breckley's proposal?
I'll make a motion to approve the $97,200 Breckley proposal for the work.
Kathy made a motion to approve. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Shirley seconds. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. In regards to Gina's request for cashing in the CD that's callable and renewable in November, is there a motion to her request?
I'll make a motion to approve cashing in the CD.
Brooke made a motion to approve Gina's request. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Kathy seconds. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Is there somewhere to sign on this one? The thing fell off.
Where that yellow sticker is? I think, oh, it's a little resistant. Oh, what the? This might be the second page.
Okay.
Let me double check.
Up the, yep.
Where it says acceptance?
Yep.
Okay.
Water tap, sewer tap fees suggest that the last meeting at the council's request provided updated sewer tap fees. The meeting, we told her we'd take it under advisement until the following meeting when we had a chance to review it. Is there any questions regarding what other counties do? Or other municipalities slash regional waste districts do?
This was his original one?
Oh, I thought I took it from Kathy.
You did. Oh.
I gave mine to Curtis.
I thought I did. It's awkward.
Do you want to table again? It's not something we have to act on immediately. There's no, do we want to keep the fees the same as what we have? We wouldn't be, we wouldn't be able to vote tonight on the fee change. On ordinance? Mm-hmm. I think that it does need to be increased. I think we are extremely low compared to other surrounding departments. And that was the comments that we've had from other people. So I think that it does need to increase if the board wants to wait another couple weeks to make a recommendation. I think that's acceptable, too. Then we can authorize ordinance to go. In fact, starting to be in the year, it doesn't need to be immediate.
I do have a question that this includes material costs as well. I see one for Liberty does, but the other ones doesn't, they don't specify. So I'd like to, I don't know, is that?
We can adjust. I mean, we can.
We've always, I think, included costs beyond, material costs beyond the tapping fee, so I'm assuming that would be the same.
Yeah.
But the other ones don't say. Except for Liberty.
Maybe we can get clarification on that for the next meeting and then provide better insight. Is there a motion to table the water and sewer tap fees until the following meeting?
I'll make that motion.
Kathy made a motion to table. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Brooke seconds. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried.
Yeah, just keep in mind, probably will push too much beyond the next meeting due to the publication.
Right.
By the end of the year.
Keystone Software Renewal, Gina?
So Keystone is our software system we use for key fund, key billing, utility billing, and key payroll. The key device portion you see on that is for our meter reading. This was an increase of $875 from our last contract. So the total contract for one year is $11,125. Just asking for permission to do that license.
What was the total amount?
$11,125. And then you can see at the top, the key billing breakdown is $4,560. Key fund, $2,810. Key device, which was the meter reading portion, is $945. And key payroll, what direct deposit is $2,110.
What kind of increase was it, Gina? How much?
$875.
Okay.
And you're satisfied? Is there a motion for the request?
Make a motion to approve the voice systems. Is it a, is it not a quote?
Yeah. Kathy made a motion to approve the quote for $11,125, the voice systems. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Brooke seconds. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Brookville Volunteer Fire Department use of Schilling Center, Mark? I saw, there you are. Do you want to come up and address? You have two things, ladder truck and the Schilling Center.
Mark had asked for the Schilling Center for a benefit.
Okay.
I just wanted clarification from council that the date is available. Go ahead and turn on your microphone. Press that button.
Yeah, November 13th.
We can hear you.
Mine has a button on it.
If you get the button tied, it's okay.
Oh, gosh.
We have a contract for that. Is everybody sunny?
Can you hear me now? November 13th, that is the day that we're having Matt Rubenstein's benefit breakfast. You know, that he was the one that got injured here at our reverse raffle. And then I give Gina some other dates for 20.3, which would be some of our breakfast, our reverse raffle for next year, and our Christmas party we have at the end of the year.
Those dates are all there?
Yep.
I think we do. A motion to allow donated use.
I'll make a motion to donate use of the Schilling Center to the fire department for their designated dates.
Kathy made a motion. Kathy made a motion. Shirley seconds. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Easy enough on that?
Yeah.
Ladder truck.
So on the ladder truck, I did get the money from the county, the $100,000 that they promised. And I got the $100,000 from Brookville Township. They're supposed to be cutting checks somewhere around first of November. I'd like to see us move forward on the purchase of the ladder truck. By the time that the truck gets here, we need to come up with another $200,000. But I have $100,000 setback in our equipment fund right now that we can put forward. And then within the two years, we should have the other $100,000 to put forward.
So when, when will it be delivered?
It will be probably somewhere around April or May of 2024.
Okay. And we did budget for the first payment to come out in 2023, although that won't happen.
Will we need that then before 2023?
What I would like to do is take their $200,000, go ahead and put it down because the more money that we put upfront for the truck, the cheaper the payment will be in the long run on the lease. And I talked to Gina about this. We have, you know, money in there now in the account. I would like to take money out of there to add to it because that's just going to make that payment that much cheaper.
So I probably have to do an additional for the King Cap Fund?
Yeah, but we can do that next year.
Oh, okay. Then if it's, it's already budgeted for next year, so I'm saying, when do we have to make that down payment, I guess?
The down payment will have to be made probably sometime in November, which I have that covered.
Okay. So I will have to do an addition like that?
You shouldn't have to.
Okay. Shouldn't have.
Shouldn't have, yes.
Then what was your options on, or what was your recommendation on the four options presented, Mark?
So my recommendation is do the 12-year.
Okay.
To where the payments, was it $49,000, something like, change? I think that's probably our best option.
So it's a 12-year?
Yeah.
Length of payment would start January of 2025? 4.67% interest? I've had, well, I think we've all had several people question the need of ladder truck. Can you provide insight on why the town needs?
So the need for ladder truck, I know the truck doesn't get used a lot, but we are the only people in the county that has a ladder truck. Everybody knows that there's so many grain bins in this county. We, there's been people that has got trapped in the grain bins and they've had to be rescued, you know? We've used it on several structural fires. We took it to Laurel probably a month ago because the county sheriff's department was chasing a suspect and they got trapped on top of the roof and couldn't get down. And the only way they could get down was us to take the ladder truck up there and get them down. So, you know, it, it's not a great need, but it is a need for this, you know, for this town and community. We have several tall buildings here, you know, the Valley House, a lot of different ones on Main Street. We can reach most of them buildings. We can reach the Valley House, things like that. The current truck we have is a 99. They recommend after 25 years that these trucks be taken out of service. So to keep our ISO rating, we need to make sure that we keep our equipment up to snuff because if we fall back on our ISO, that affects everybody in the community.
Can you talk about what an ISO rating is?
So your ISO is what the rating that the fire department is. So right now, we're rated a six, which is very good for a volunteer department. And if we go to a seven, that means everybody's homeowner's insurance in Brookville is going to go up.
Makes sense to me.
Can I just ask one question? What, what would happen if you did not get the truck this year?
If we didn't get the truck this year and you waited till next year, we probably wouldn't get the $200,000 that we have promised to us. And the truck already went up 7%. So instead of being $845,000, you're looking at $910,000, $920,000. And the price is just going to keep going up every year.
It's unlikely it's going to decrease. It's going to keep going up.
No, a fire truck's not going to decrease in price.
We did that, too. When we were looking at the new trucks that we had before, they kept going up the longer we delayed.
Yeah.
Every quarter we delayed, it went up again. Any other questions from the board for?
Mark? That is a good interest rate.
Yeah, I think so, too.
What was it?
4.67. Even at 12-year. Is there a motion for his request?
Yeah, I'll make a motion. Approve the purchase, the procedure to purchase the truck.
Chuck made a motion to start the procedure to begin the lease financing for the new ladder truck. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Brooke seconds. All in favor? Opposed? It ends. Thank you. Thanks for working with the county and getting the money. That's awesome.
Yeah, it's been a long road.
Yeah, it has.
But yeah, we, we've got it done, so.
Good work.
And it's good. All right, thanks.
Thank you.
Gina or Grant, can I, should I execute? Do I execute this? Do you want to take it under advisement until you review, Grant?
So forth.
I have the signature.
I might want to ask him, well, they approved it, so can he essentially sign it later? I just want to make sure this is the correct terms.
Okay.
Yeah, just make it clear that we have authority to sign them.
Okay. Let's do a motion to authorize council president to execute the financing documents.
I'll make that motion.
Brooke made a motion. Does that affect? Is there a second?
I'll second.
Kathy seconds. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Gina, just let me know three, four, 10 times. Right, Tara? Speaking of Tara, public hearing on preserving Main Street construction grant application. Tara, do you want me to go ahead and open the public hearing?
If you'd like to.
Go ahead and open the public hearing. This hearing is on preserving Main Street construction grant application. Tara with ARA is here to address the board.
Thank you, Curtis. There is a signing sheet that's circulating for everyone who is in attendance, so that's making its way around the room. On or about October 28th, 2022, the town of Brookville, Indiana intends to apply to the Indiana Office of Community and Rural Affairs for a grant from the State Community Development Block Grant CDBG program. This program is funded by Title I of the Federal Housing and Community Development Act of 1974 as amended. These funds are to be used for a community development project that will include the following activities: a historic facade revitalization and rehabilitation project located in the town of Brookville. This project will result in no displacement of any persons or businesses. The total amount of CDBG funds requested is $1,884,000. The amount of CDBG funds proposed to be used for activities that will benefit low and moderate income persons is $969,506.40. The town of Brookville also proposes to expend an estimated $0 in non-CDBG funds on the project. Interested citizens are invited to provide comments regarding this project. Written comments could have been submitted to ARA. We received no comments. Gina, did the town receive any comments?
No comments.
Thank you. I will now open up for public comments. Please step up to the podium, state your first and last name before commenting. No takers, so I propose to close the public hearing.
Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll make that motion.
Kathy made a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Brooke seconds. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carrying. Hearing now closed. Anything else, Tara? Thank you. So after that, this Resolution 2022-6 is a resolution of the town council of the town of Brookville, Indiana, authorizing the submittal of the CDBG preserving Main Street construction grant application to the Indiana Office of Community and Rural Affairs and addressing related matters. Any questions on the resolution? Motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2022-6.
Kathy made a motion to approve. Is there a second? Shirley seconds. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Valley House Flats Tax Abatement, Grant?
Okay, so the Valley House Flats Tax Abatement, this has been lingering in the background for a while, both here and then through the county because where the issues, issues are coming up is where things are coming through the county. So I met with Mr. Rippey, the representative from the accessory office, the auditor, and the representative from Nexus, who's the property tax consultant of the county, and trying to piece together what, what had happened and what needed done to get this all squared away moving forward because there've been paperwork problems being sorted out and sorted exactly what was and was not covered. One of the primary issues that became apparent in looking back at this is that the initial abatement covered Valley House Flats LP. Another entity called Whitewater Partners got picked up in the process of financing and getting things done. And there was confusion as far as what was actually covered on the abatement since this had Valley House flats. And then when it was coming into the county, there was this Whitewater Partners entity that was, that was part of it as well. Initially, there was confusion because we thought that it was only the preliminary abatement was actually known before 37 units. And there ended up being 27 units that were Valley House flats, a total of, and then a total of 20 units that are Whitewater, or 27 units of Valley House flats, 20 units that are Whitewater Partners. So there ended up being a total of 47 units over there that were split in those two names. The initial application, if you look at the ordinance and then you go back to the SB1 form after the ordinance, and this is where confusion came in, it does actually say that there were 45 houses that were presented at the time of that initial abatement, or 45 units, sorry, which is dated in June of 2018. So back at the time, Mike built, approved that, and Gina witnessed that. So back in 2018, the initial plan had 45. At some point after that, I think they may have actually dropped it to 37, which is currently probably some of the confusion with the initial approval, did include 45, but it only had them in one name. So the initial determination that needs to be made is how to deal with that, the fact that you have two entities now that came in, you have, you're, you're close to the same number of units, you're two units off. So the scope of the project didn't actually change drastically, but there are two entities that, that came into play. I don't know, I want Mr. Rippey to comment on that and discuss how that came into play or a lot of their questions as far as the, the number of units that you approved on, number of units are there, or questions about this second business entity. But there's a couple of other things to hit after that.
Was everything filed in time and, and order?
For the initial establishment, I think everything was filed in time and order. It's dated, there's a file stamp date 2018 in the auditor's office, and I believe it did have this SB1 attached to it, the initial SB1 in 2018. So I believe that part was filed. Now, there's another SB1 that wandered through later that I actually don't think was necessary. I think the SB1, you just establish once as a baseline. I believe that that did with the ordinance, two dollars off at the time, just if I can remember the name, the one name, and then the abatement started coming, request, or I mean. And I believe that that did get with the ordinance, two governor's offices at time, just if I can remember the name, the one name, and then the abatement started coming, request, coming into your name.
So the issue that the auditors raised this year is that was this, and I can get clarification from her, that this wasn't filed in time resulting in taxes being owed this year. Is that correct?
Well, yeah. There's an issue with if, so the project is not completed until April of 20. So then with the reassessment by the first paperwork that was turned in on the abatement was in 2021. There's an issue on the completeness of the 2021 paperwork and the 2022 paperwork that we can get to. That's an extra issue. And then there's an issue on personal property that we can get to as well. But I'm kind of afraid if we start throwing too many steps in, we're going to have to confuse.
So what are we, what's the, what are we looking to do?
So I guess the first question is, are you good with approving this, that this goes on the forty-five units, given that part of that forty-five would be in a different name?
Should we, should we do a different abatement on a different property? Because we gave it to Valley House Flats LP.
It's given to Valley House Flats LP, and it says to repurpose Valley House and adjacent buildings and construction of new buildings behind the subject property, forty-five senior housing units. That's a place that was in the SB one. Not at the meeting, so if you specifically approved something other than that, I don't know, but that's the best I have got on. And then that back building, the back building is really confusing, but a good chunk of the back building ended up.
Market rate.
In another name, because it was market rate.
Kathy, do you understand?
Yeah, I remember a lot of it, but what can we do now that this has all come about?
So basically, to me, the first decision is, does it apply on Valley House flats literally only, and which is when they apply to the Valley House flats units? I think those are all, my understanding, those are all low-income ones, which also means they don't have, they don't turn out much tax, so I don't think he's ever going to get to the two hundred, the entity's never going to get to the 290.
And expires in 2029.
What's that?
And it expires in 2029.
That's another issue. Can you get to what the expiration is? Yes. But the first issue is the splitting this out. If, basically, what would have happened if they had come in and said, we're assigning this to another entity? I think legally, they can assign a tax abatement. There's not an issue with that if it's assumed by another entity. The big thing to me is, is the scope of the project the same? Is the scope of the project what you approved? There is an issue here that I don't think they did come back and assign that, so you would be retroactively doing that. Nexus doesn't seem to have a problem with that as far as retroactively doing that assignment. But I think there's some discretion there on figuring out what you would do on that step.
So my thoughts, and Bruce, you can try to maybe spur our recollection. The board at that time, by majority, approved the abatement request.
Right.
And it was up to 290,000 over that 10 years period of time. And I believe we knew the scope of the project was going to be the front building and the back building, the restaurant, et cetera. There was some uncertainty, some clarity around whether it was going to be thirty-some units versus the forty-some.
So what happened was, there was going to be forty-five initially. And then, if the council remembers, I came back and indicated to council that the problem was that the lender, because there were no new apartments built in Brookville at the time, probably 25 or 30 years, that there was real concern that the market rate rents could be achieved in this area. And so at that point, the lender said that they were going to test this back. And just to refresh your memory, in March of 18, that they were not going to fund the project for the market rate apartments. So we went from forty-five down to thirty-seven. Then what happened is, after the project started, and by the way, all the construction drawings were done for forty-five apartments. Then, when this happened, we had to redo all the construction drawings to call it project pack because we couldn't get it financed. Then, after the project started, Mick and Jenny came to us and said, hey, we'll use Opportunity Zone money to help fund the additional shortfall that that created in order that you could go ahead with the full number of apartments. Changed all the drawings again. We got all new state permits, and it went back up to the forty-seven. But when this tax abatement was approved, if you look at the number at the 290,000, an average affordable tax credit unit in the state of Indiana will generate about $500 in property tax. So this was a 10-year abatement. If you look at the assessment on this parcel, or on the whole project, it's $12,000. The tax goes only $12,000 over, which is about that amount of money for 27 affordable units, right? Five hundred times 27 is approximately $13,000. So in any event, that would be $130,000. The tax abatement that was assigned to this was 290 in anticipation of doing those additional units. So, you know, and during all this time, you have to also take into account, this, when this project got completed, you were in the middle of COVID. And the county didn't even have a final building inspector to even go out and inspect this project. And this board was meeting remotely. And, I mean, it was a very difficult time in terms of even trying to manage this project. And at one point, the whole office was closed over in the building just because of the COVID issues. So that's where we're at.
My thoughts would be, it would be poor form of this board to basically deny an abatement on a project that you specifically told us in there. I voted against it, and I mean, we know that. Not because it was against the project, it's because I didn't believe in the 10-year full abatement. But besides that, I think it would be poor form for us to penalize you now, after you have built the project. Because you told us if without this abatement, if it wasn't for this, there would be no project.
That's right.
And for us to renege on that portion of it, when I knew the scope of the project was to be the building behind it, the building in front, the restaurant, et cetera, as you put it there. So that's my personal feelings. Obviously, that's up to the board now, but that's my thought. Kathy, do you run that?
Yeah, I agree. I don't think at this point in time, we should do anything with the abatement that we granted back in 2018. We should still move forward with that, but how, you know, how do we alleviate those issues with the county?
I think the county needs us to say that the abatement is okay to be signable. And his SB one that he initially filed, he did put at all. I don't know if you anticipated at that point in time that a business entity operating within that.
I was trying to be as broad as possible. There are, when you do these tax credit projects, there are typically multiple entities, because there's investor entities, there's operating entities. And at the time that that was done, it was unclear, because the final, this deal didn't close until June of, June of 18, correct?
And I want to be very clear, this is not a new abatement. This was an abatement that's already been approved and voted on by the board. It was recommended by the Brookville redevelopment commission to support the project. As a result of the Valley House being completed, we were a contender for the preserving Main Street grant. That was a big remark that multiple people from OCRAS said that Brookville did well using the Opportunity Zone and the abatements to show that we were very interested in preserving historical structures and getting viable businesses on Main Street. So the project has resulted in positive growth for Brookville.
I think fundamentally, I agree with everything you've said in terms of the support that it gave for OCRAS. I think it also was the first Opportunity Zone project in the United States that used historic tax credits and low-income housing tax credits to get done. And that was a really major project, and the attorneys made a lot of money on that deal. But more fundamentally, for this entire community in this region, is what that letter said was a deficiency is no longer a deficiency.
Right.
And so whether it, whoever comes before this board proposing a multifamily project in the future, you now have a comp rent that says that this town and this market can support a rental figure that would support the construction of multifamily housing now at today's cost. And that's a big deal. That's a huge deal, because four years ago, you couldn't have gotten that.
So Grant, what do you need us to do to clean it up?
So basically, I would have, I think you would need to direct me to draft an assignment for the next meeting to say that that was assigned to split with Valley House Flats and Whitewater Partners, if that's what you want to do. On that step, I think that's what you would need to document.
Any questions for Grant? When's the restaurant? Any update on the restaurant?
So the final plans have been submitted at this point, just to, and again, there's been a lot of back and forth with the National Park Service on getting that approved. But the plans are completed as of two days ago, and it's going out to bid right now, just for the final finishes, and then they'll start construction on it. So our hope is probably in the first part of this next year.
So then, I think the next, another item is the personal property, we believe.
No, so, yeah, so here's what happened with that. And again, if you look at when this was filed, the state of Indiana changed their property tax abatement rules. At one point, they were abating real and personal. There was an SB one filed for the restaurant as well, for the personal property there. However, that ordinance that was passed, or that tax abatement, was only for real property. And I think, as I've reflected on this, I think what happened, when that went to a 10-year abatement, we lost the personal property. That resolution does not cover personal property. So that.
Yeah, it's specifically for real.
Right, so that's a non-issue.
Then we've got the timeliness and completeness of the annual filings. There was some confusion on the timeliness, because the statute says May 15 or within 30 days after the delivery of the Form 11, basically, the property tax assessment. They were slightly after May 15, but I think where your Form 11s were, they were within 30 days of the Form 11.
That's right. So again, because of COVID, the final tax assessment was not agreed to until June of '21. So it was just strictly because of, you know, just trying to get into the building and provide the necessary information to Nexus.
And then, the, there were blanks on there that the county thought needed to have been filled out, but they're not filled out. That's an issue that can be, I mean, it is a clerical issue. That's an issue, you can choose to accept those forms or not accept those forms, basically for the 2021 and 2022 years. If you could explain, you told us how those forms were filled out and why they were filled out that way.
Because of this issue that was going on, to try to bifurcate the numbers between the assessments and when the Valley House Flats tax abatement was only for that one entity, it was difficult to try to split those out. And again, when those forms were filled out in '21, the assessment was not agreed to until June of '21. So it was a month after that form was even completed. So that's why those values were left the way they were, because it was just undetermined. The form had to be filed in order to preserve the tax abatement, which was the course we chose, rather than not file anything. So the county, in meeting with them, seemed like they were okay with going back and amending it.
The county said that they could accept that if the town ratified it, basically.
What's the impact? What are we talking?
The impact could be getting the abatement or not getting the abatement.
In its entirety, like from here on out?
No, for those first two years.
Okay.
So that was.
That money hasn't been collected, though, correct?
For 22.
Part of it's been collected, right?
You have paid.
All the payments that were due were paid.
So it'd be on the, what was it, 12,000 on the Valley House flats per year, and then 13 per half, so 26. We have 38,000 per year, I think.
That's been collected.
Roughly, 30, something like that, between 30 and 38,000.
That's been collected.
Yeah.
So has that been distributed to the redevelopment commission then, as the increase?
I don't know if it's been distributed yet. We can check on that.
So if we voted to ratify the county's decision to accept the clerical discrepancies, would that money be reimbursed to Valley House Flats, or would it be retained?
I don't know. We can ask that.
I know, when Bruce was looking to have his stuff filled out, I mean, he worked with me and Gina to make sure it was filed in time, correct, Gina? So from the town's end, I believe you did everything that we needed to do for us to support you filing what we thought was a complete application. I mean, I'd have no idea that it wasn't complete had the county not raised the question.
I think he'd been filling it out, I think he had a consultant fill it out, that man in another community, and that community's been accepting it. So that may have led to some of the confusion as well.
So can we do this in two parts? Can we see what the impact would be for the redevelopment?
Yeah.
Or if it's not been paid redevelopment? Who's, where that money's been, if it's general, if it's, it shouldn't be general, because it was in the redevelopment district, and it would have been paid from it. Because that building was valued at very little tax assessment.
Preliminary.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So you're saying the rest went to TIF?
It should have went to TIF. So I would just need to see.
Is that a win? 2020, hey, 2021?
Yeah.
Or wait, it was.
Twenty twenty, hey, 22.
Right.
So yeah, you may only pay, there may only be one payment on that.
At the new rate.
Yeah.
Okay.
So actually, it's not that much.
Right.
Okay.
And you only paid the May installment, have you paid November yet?
And that's why we've been trying to get this resolved, was before the November installment, to decide.
So essentially, if this gets fixed, it wouldn't just affect the November installment?
The, it would, well, it would only affect the, the November installment would no longer be due, and we'd have to figure out what to do with the May installment.
Can we figure that out before we, I mean.
Yeah.
Or just extend the abatement for one more installment and not reimburse the prior installment.
Yeah, yeah, that's fine.
Doing updated ordinance for the abatement? I think that makes sense.
And then, the one other issue is the time clock on the abatement, since the project, I don't know if it concluded a little later than scheduled, or because there was a 10-year clock on the abatement.
It was, we approved it in 2018 with a 10-year time clock. Is that the max that we were able to do by state statute? I thought that's why we did that.
I'm sorry?
The maximum years to pay is 10 years.
Right.
So I thought that was set by.
I think it's when the clock starts running, basically. It's 10 years from when the ordinance was adopted, it's 10 years from when the abatement actually started, because there's about a 10-year lag. actually started, because there's about a 10-year lag.
Yeah.
Or is it, you mean when the project was completed?
Effectively, yeah, it'd be basically when the reassessment was done, which is certainly after the project was completed.
And I guess arguably, you would give an assessment based, and for the financing of this, it was based on when the project would be completed, right? Because that impacts the cash flow of the project. What lenders do in this situation is they look at the cash flow of the project, and if there's an abatement in place, they take that into consideration in the cash flow in the first 10 years of the project's operation. And so that's why this is configured the way it is for this project.
I mean, is there, is there any...
I think...
Can you delay the abatement to start? Because I could see, if there's a 10-year max and the assessment doesn't hit for two years, I mean, you're essentially giving up any...
Yeah, off the chain, see, I far wouldn't push that. And then the other thing I'm thinking of is if this is $38,000 per year, I think even if you get it in now, it's going to cap out before it hits 290.
Oh, yeah, you're not going to get to the full...
So I think as long as we get it straightened out and the glitch is going forward, you can still cap it out either way, I believe, without, and maybe that issue's set for another day.
That's true.
At the end of the day, there was $3 million more spent on this project than was even contemplated.
Right. Okay, so original request, what's the motion that we need to do?
I've already forgotten.
I have too.
I forgot about drafting an assignment.
First would be draft an assignment, second would be confirm with the county how to deal with the May payment and make sure, I mean, if they're okay with rolling into the back end of it, make sure that's okay with the county, if you're okay with that.
Assuming we haven't met the threshold, 290 threshold?
Yeah.
Because that may be moot too.
Right. It may be moot, yeah. Still can't go over 290. So again, if you're okay with that, that is predicated on accepting that paperwork, but I would say take a vote on all of that at the next meeting when you've got a written proposal in front of you.
Okay.
So that everybody knows who voted on it.
So do we need a motion to authorize you to draft the ordinance? Okay. Is there a motion to authorize Grant to draft an ordinance resolution? Which one would it be?
Resolution.
A resolution...
Probably an amendment to the resolution.
An amendment to the resolution authorizing an assignment of benefits?
I'll make that motion.
Kathy made that motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Chuck seconds, all in favor? Posed? Okay. And then, do we need any other motions, or do we just need to find some more?
I think that's good, and then while I'm ready, I can go to the next meeting because we can, we'll have a much smaller universe to deal with that.
Okay. Satisfactory groups?
Yeah, that's great, thanks.
Perfect, thank you.
So when is the next meeting?
First Tuesday.
December 1st?
Yeah, so that would do his time, and then the tax would be going on the 10th.
Yeah.
Just barely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ratio construction phase proposal, I would recommend that we table this. We have some concerns regarding the proposal, would like to work out with them prior to discussion. Is there a motion to that effect?
I'll make a motion to table the ratio.
Brooke made a motion to table. Is there a second?
Second.
I'm at Chuck.
Chuck seconds, all in favor? Posed, motion carried.
What's the ratio of construction?
Ratio was the architecture firm that we did for the preservation main street. Building permit number 973, this is for Tasha Cox, 47 Memorial Road. It's residential use on the property, it's her home. She's adding an external front porch to entire front of home and redo, what's it say, Gina?
Roof replacement.
And also, yeah.
And also roof replacement and small addition in the backyard for...
So in the back to redo roof and add bedrooms.
Thank you.
So originally, when I submitted this to Tim, he contacted them because their drawing did have measurements or setbacks on it. So I just got that today, and Tim did look at it, and he sent a setback to our... Let me see, I read the last page, the red shit, the moving portion, and then the gentleman put in the setback. I think this old portion here didn't, but it's already not ours this.
Any questions for permit number 973?
So did you say that Tim checked on it and it wasn't...
Yes, correct. He did look at it.
It wasn't legal?
After he dropped it off to me, I sent a picture to Tim and talked to him to make sure.
And before the county issued permit, they verified the setback requirements again. So you can always add that into your motion that it's contingent upon setbacks. Is there a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we okay it upon approval, knowing that it might be disapproved by the county.
Chuck made a motion to approve, subject to county review. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Shirley seconds, all in favor? Posed, motion carried. Next up is permit number 974, this is for RBWP. This is for 210 Canal Street, property that I own. We are going to be constructing a new single-family residence on it, currently residential use, full set of new built blueprints with setbacks, and it does meet setback requirements as required by the county.
This is the first apartment?
It is, yeah, top fire later this year.
I know, I have to.
Any questions? As a disclosure, I do own a portion of that company. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve, obligation 974.
Kathy made a motion to approve. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Brooke seconds, all in favor? Posed, motion carried.
I'll sign the most, and I'll give this back to you. I'm sorry.
Gina, would you be able to email me a copy of this tomorrow?
Sure.
Thank you. Historic Preservation Commission update, Jess?
Yeah, the Historic Preservation Commission met last month during that meeting. We went over boundaries and guidelines. The boundaries have already been approved, but the guidelines, I talked to Grant a little bit about, I wasn't sure how to go about that. The Historic Preservation Commission approved them, so I guess essentially you don't have to adopt them, but I talked to Grant.
Technically, it's not a legal requirement that you adopt those guidelines, but I think they're interested in having your blessing on them that they're agreeable and probably not a bad idea, just to make sure everybody's on the same page. I was kind of surprised that Kevin was not a big requirement to adopt that, as he believed.
And there are the guidelines that the state, or Jared and his group...
Correct.
Recommended and change every year?
What, the four, others or what?
The Historic Preservation Commission on issuing COAs, certificate of appropriateness when you're amending or altering the exteriors of buildings within the historic district.
Thank you.
I don't see an issue, even if it's not necessary, to kind of ratify the HPC's recommendation.
I think we definitely need the town board's approval on this. As a member of the Historic Preservation Board, I would feel a lot better.
Yeah. I agree. The guidelines have been presented to the board ahead of time. Is there a motion to accept the recommendation of the Historic Preservation Commission to approve the guidelines?
I'll make a motion to accept the guidelines.
Brooke made a motion to accept. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Kathy seconds, all in favor? Posed, motion carried. And then I know there's some discussions, Paul had called me asking about the, some additional ordinances that would further protect historical structures in Brookfield, and wanted to know the feeling of the board. Essentially, there are, for the board's information, there are several additional ordinances that the board can put into effect that would encourage the preservation of historical structures. I don't know if you guys have discussed or agreed what some of those proposals would be. I know there'd be like a, what do they call it, a demo by neglect? Is it a demo by neglect ordinance?
I did ask, I'm sorry. We talked about it tonight. I did ask Jared. He said that in Aurora, that they just updated their ordinances to have more, as he would say, but I asked him to email us those samples, so just so we can kind of work on them. Historic Preservation Commission, and then of course, Grant.
Paul essentially asked me to ask the board to reiterate the importance of preserving the historical structures by being more than just a COA, but also giving authority to make sure that buildings aren't just left in disrepair without going through COAs. And I think that's a great idea because there are several structures in Brookfield that meet that guideline, and they ultimately end up being candidates for demolition or falling in themselves. So I think it's a good thing that the board could do. So if you could stay on Jared...
Sure.
To get copies of those ordinances for the board to consider, and then you guys can pass along back to Paul that we had a conversation that we are in full support of making sure that you guys have good authority to maintain those historic structures in Brookfield.
I agree.
Anything else from the HPC, Jess?
We went over renderings on the agenda, the 22 renderings, the percent for ratio to the state for Section 106 review. We looked over those as well, were in agreeance with whatever they decide ultimately. So the way I understand it, that when it comes back from the state, that it'll have to go back in front of HPC once they're ready for construction, for HPC to issue a certificate of appropriateness anyway. We're going to see, obviously, these again.
When does our building permits need to reflect the COAs? Do you guys have an idea on that?
We don't.
So if we're adopting those guidelines, do we start immediately?
That's what I was wondering.
I think so.
So now, building permits come to the town first?
HPC first.
HPC first.
First, then the town.
Can we... So it's going to, I can see issues with delays on that, especially depending on what your guys' schedules are, our schedules are going back to the county. Is there ways that we can approve, subject to approval of COAs, if we do with county setbacks?
So my understanding, based on the COA, was that there are certain guidelines that Jared is already representative from, the landmarks can approve. So if it's very cut and dry, then it goes to Jared, and Jared's able to approve that for us. If it is something that is questionable in terms of the, any landmarks guidelines, it's very detailed and requires discussion, then it would come before us, at least that was my understanding, when it represented from Jared as our representative.
Okay.
That's the way I understand it as well.
Okay.
I would also add, I think that, based on my seeing thus far, if there's any that's called fairly quickly, and the majority of us are typically able to come, not that we want to do that, even Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, but most of us are pretty responsive in terms of making time for priorities like that, and understand the importance of getting through that process.
And we do have a vacancy on the HPC, so if anyone within the historic district is interested in serving, contact one of the board members, I'd like to get them appointed and active sooner than later, that way they can get in on the inception of the conversation. So if any of the board members have any ideas, reach out, and then we'll discuss those the next meeting. Anything else, Jess?
I think that's it.
Christmas light contract?
So we have our annual Christmas light contract, I think, in the budget, requesting 2021 or 2022, you know, for 800 to 1,000. So that's the only change, I think, from the standard normal contract we've done in the past.
I think that's long overdue.
Yes, it was 800, probably, 800 years.
Yeah. Any questions or discussions? Motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the fire department's Christmas light contract.
Kathy made a motion to approve. Shirley seconds, all in favor? Posed, motion carried. Seven seconds. Gina, or Jess, anything tonight?
I spoke to Brent about the Hidden Valley sidewalk. He was able to obtain a quote, he's tried to get a kind of quote, but then by the time, basically by the time they're going to go through the work, or by the time we approve it, or say it was in for the budget next year, then the price goes up.
Randy, Marty.
Excuse us a minute.
We're trying to finish the meeting here. If you guys want to talk, you can go outside. Your portion of it's done.
So...
Jess, continue, please.
He was able to obtain, I'm sorry.
I missed the whole first...
I know, you couldn't hear it.
I'm sorry.
They complained?
I talked to Brent about the Hidden Valley sidewalk. He said whenever a company comes up with a quote, they can't get to it immediately, and the prices change, and they have to refit it. We had a conversation about putting this on the budget for next year. In the meantime, he was able to obtain a quote that would be good, and the group that can do it can do it next week, I mean, as early as next week. It's roughly $3,000 to $4,000 cheaper than any of the previous quotes that we had, so I'm asking that we entertain the idea of possibly doing that next year.
Makes sense to me.
Yeah.
I would be in favor.
Is that the area that's already blocked off because it's, yeah?
Yeah.
It's not even usable at this point?
Is there a motion to approve Brent's request?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Brooke made a motion to approve. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Kathy seconds, all in favor?
Thank you.
Posed, motion carried. Kevin Brown.
Yes. Thank you.
Jess, anything else? Gina?
Yes, I did want to announce that I was able to schedule our meetings for the rest of the year at the Government Center, the Commissioner's Room. So unfortunately, when I did reach out to them, it was already booked for today, this evening. But she said, going forward, our new space would be available for us to use. So starting November 1st, we'll be at the Government Center on the second floor. And then I'll put that out to media and post it on there.
Hey Jess, did you want to talk about your...
I did, I'm sorry.
No, it's fine, I just, it popped in my head that you wanted to talk about the mural.
The paint-by-numbers mural is outlined, and the numbers are there. Autumn Williams finished it up, I believe, this week, so we are ready for the community to help paint. I put something in the paper for it tomorrow, and then I want to send you something, Gina, if you can post it to Facebook for me. But we're asking the community to come and help us paint Saturday from noon to 2:00.
Cool. The police station building, the mural in the police station.
Thank you.
Chuck, anything?
Nothing for me.
Brooke?
No.
Kathy?
No.
Shirley? Grant? Any comment regarding the agenda items tonight from the public?
Just a question, if someone violates the historic preservation, who's the enforcer?
HPC.
The Historic Preservation Commission. So they issue tickets, or like, parking tickets, or do the police go around and do that, or how does that work?
I can't, I think I can't. So it doesn't work, it says. So right now, it would just be local ordinances to do it, so actually, the police department would have to, yes, Chris. So the police department would do it. But like, we could report it if we opted to, and I don't think that's the goal of the Historic Preservation Committee, it's only to preserve what happens to the community. And also, and also ensure that we need to assume a legal grant, that the historic building would align with ours, right? So you don't want someone to create a sealed building and build a fourth of us.
Well, I think that's quickly, I understand, that just people buy it. Yeah, is there a fee or...
It's $25 each of the permits, as you're asking.
No, for violation.
There's not currently a fee, it would just be local ordinances, so.
So if there's a local ordinance...
General ordinances for... General ordinances for ordinance violations.
Yeah, they just let the police move for parking on the wrong side of the street, or too much traction.
We had a conversation earlier about putting more teeth to it, if you will.
Correct, yeah. And we don't have one in place specifically that pertains to us currently.
There will be different ordinances placed, that's what we discussed in the beginning of the meeting with the HPC.
For enforcement and police.
Not necessarily police, just general enforcement.
Yeah, correct, yeah. And like, as you mentioned, Jared, who was going to be in a landmark, they just adopted similar ordinances of what we could possibly like to do, obviously, we have to vote in favor of that, but in the Aurora market. So he's going to send that, and then you should order to Jess, and you can see what you're working on, to understand if there are ways in which you could, or, so, for example, I live in the neighborhood of Tyre, and you didn't get the COA, there was a fee that you had, or find that you had to pay, so you got that COA, right? So like, I put a fence in, I wanted to put a fence in, I literally didn't have architecture, I drew it on these papers, like, with my beautiful second-grade art skills, and it was approved for $20, I think it's $20 dollars in that paper, so. Does that help?
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely. And you know, landmarks have a lot of restrictions on their Wednesday, too, and if I had to remember, if it won't be too, I could probably have parents do those kind of things.
Okay.
This is a good time to clarify, I think, I think at a meeting, someone may have intimated that this just took the place of zoning and building permits, and it did not. You still have to do zoning and building permits in addition to doing this. You obviously can't, it's a safe building, and you know, you still need to follow some of your requirements.
I think one of the other things, too, that probably should be mentioned, and I think this may have been mentioned Tyre, but like, you know, if there's a lot that's unkept, or a building that's falling down, we aren't able to do anything about that for it. So it's not like we can go to you and say, you might have swept your sidewalk, or painted your house for 20 years, right? Like, it's not about those types of things, it's about, let's say, if you want to tear off your entire roof and make it something that is, you know, white, like, metal, shiny, not appropriate to what period of that home was at, what we would be looking at, so. Like her, just kidding, we're not doing color.
Anything else, person? Anything else? Motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Kathy made a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
All second.
Brooke seconds, all in favor? Posed, motion carried.